Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcek?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes, here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Kipman County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention, for all.
And we'll start today's work session with public safety.
Okay, municipal court.
And I know you're not gonna wanna hear it, but I really have nothing.
You're busy.
I am busy. I gotta get back in there because I've got major things going on at this point with all types of courts. So, if anybody has a question for me, feel free, otherwise.
Deb, you brought on a part-timer a little while ago. How is that working out?
She is no longer with us.
Oh, okay.
Didn't work, so I guess not.
Okay.
Didn't work out, so that's what Laura and I are handling everything, so.
One of the reasons why you gotta run back.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Fire department?
Good afternoon, all. Okay, I'm happy to report. I'm gonna report that for June, we had fifty-six fire calls. This is a record, historic record, highest ever. Next closest would be forty-five. That would be in July, but that's the highest record for June. I just did some interesting stats from ten years ago. In 2010, we had ten fire calls per month, and eleven was fourteen, so it's definitely an uptick in fire calls. We also have ten days out of the thirty, we had over three calls a day. I'm just saying this because you have to realize that these are volunteers that have to leave their jobs and do things, so it's not like they're there all the time, so it has been busy. We're already up to thirty calls this month, halfway through, so it's been a busy summer. Our EMS responded to seventy-four EMS calls, and that was up from the previous year of fifty-five. And again, EMS responded fifteen days over three calls, three of the days, eight of her five calls. We've had seven all calls. Judy will know what that is, but that means when a second ambulance is needed. Last year, we had three for the year, so there were seven this month. So for an all call, when the first ambulance is out, we have an all call for the second ambulance. Avalon is called, and we try to get our second ambulance out, which we have gotten our second ambulance out. Three times, we've had every ambulance on the island tied up, so it's been a busy, busy summer season so far. The calls-
May I ask?
Yes.
What do you attribute the rise in fire calls to?
I can only say it's the more people, 'cause none of the statistics are showing that actually our fire alarms are down.
I was just gonna ask you that.
Yeah, our fire alarms are down, so it's, it's, it's not the fire alarms, it's just a lot of, if I read off these calls, they're all over the, all over the page here with different types of calls, so.
So there was fourteen fire alarms?
Fourteen. We had four building fires, six cooking fires, one mulch fire, six medical assists, one search for a person in the water, two elevator rescues, three watercraft rescues, one gasoline spill, six natural gas leaks, two arcing wires, two medevacs, one public assist, which was an umbrella, two cover assignments, two smoke scares, fourteen fire alarms, and three carbon dioxide alarms. So.
You're busy.
It's been very busy, and again, this month is shaping up to be just as busy, so.
Wow. I think you're gonna be busy this weekend.
Yep. Hundred degrees always makes, at least-
Yes.
Any questions?
The house alarms, we still have an ordinance after so many they get fined if, at the same location?
Yes. For burger alarms, yes, and for fire alarms. Usually for fire alarms, it's taken care of, but we have very few repeat-
Repeats?
Repeat people. If they do repeat, they repeat-
Right away.
Right away.
Yeah.
Three times in a row, and then we get the alarm company in there, but.
So then even though it wasn't the June report, how about the fireworks? Everything went well from your end, from the department's end, and-
I've heard one negative thing.
All right, that's good.
Highly unusual for Stone Harbor. So, it was great. I mean, it's, it's, we already booked them for next year, July 4th, which is-
All booked and everything, ready to go, good.
Saturday, 'cause it's a leap year.
Yeah.
Really? It's gonna be on a Saturday?
Busy Saturday.
I think they were very well done.
Yes, they were. They were awesome.
The weather was perfect, everything was, went well. The only thing we, we had a problem with was the drift of the barge. Maybe you didn't notice that, but-
Oh, I noticed, yeah.
We passed that on, and next year, they will maintain it right in front of Ninety-Fifth Street.
Yeah, 'cause I did notice it moved from last year. Yeah, you could see it went like two blocks.
Yeah, I mean, we were trying to give everybody a show.
We, it was great at a hundred and Fourth Street.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, police department?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chief.
I don't have too much to report. Monthly report for June of 2019, there were a hundred and seventy-four motor vehicle stops, and four adults were arrested. In terms of personnel, we have all of our seasonal personnel working now, and our three full-time officers that graduated from the police academy in early June, they're nearing the end of their field training officer period, which means they ride double in one car with, with a field training officer to coach them through, you know, certain policy procedure and basic aspects of how to handle the job. But that's about pretty much it that I have. Our Fourth of July on our end went perfect, without a hitch. Couldn't ask-
That was great with that amount of people and-
Couldn't ask for anything better. And Grant's not here, but with the, the beach end gates that they created-
Right.
That helped us out immensely, 'cause last year, we had an officer in a car at every beach end. Now with the gates being closed, we were able to take those, those officers in cars and put them in the area of the fireworks, which was perfect, perfect. I couldn't have asked for anything better.
It's excellent.
I must say thank you to Grant and Craig Reeves and all those people that worked on those gates to, to get them installed. Very helpful.
And also, so everybody on council knows, as I was walking off the beach on Ninety-Fifth Street, the chief himself was at the intersection of Ninety-Fifth and First along with the captain directing traffic as the crowd was leaving.
Lead by example.
Mm-hmm, good job.
Thank you.
And I understand you're on deck for tomorrow night at the museum.
I think he's not.
I was unaware of that.
Oh, you might wanna give Kim Parker a call. I think that she understands that you are the featured speaker.
Oh, my God.
I'm smiling, but uh-oh.
Don't you have something to do tomorrow night?
Definitely.
It's, I thought, yeah.
Did I give you a hand?
She mentioned it has something to do with the history of the police department, and two guys were coming that were known as the dynamic duo in the sixties and seventies. It was two guys that worked here, Furman, and the other guy's name is eluding me. They came to the building dedication, and she did, Kim had told me that they were gonna be talking.
Maybe that's, maybe that's who she's referring to. We were approached just prior to the building dedication by some museum members and asked about, you know, if we could do that, and we said, "Yeah, no problem," but nothing had ever been firmed up in terms of a date. So maybe it's, I, I did meet Mr. Furman-
I can't remember the other man's name, but that was somebody that, those two that Kim mentioned to me were coming and do, and they would be talking.
I gave you an out.
I know, I'm not that quick, though.
You didn't say I have something to do tomorrow night. Something else to do.
I'm sure I do. But, but if, if that's what she wants, I mean, I'm sure we can make room somehow. I'll, I'll try and get in touch with her. Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, lifeguard, Sandy.
Good afternoon. Despite the beaches being very crowded, we've been relatively quiet, knock on wood. And the, and the fourth went very smoothly. It was very, very busy, but subdued. We had two EMS calls, two police calls, and six lost children were found.
Wow.
And that's-
That's always a plus.
They were all found.
That's great.
That's all I have.
For that amount of people, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, that is good.
That was a big weekend, or week, or whatever it was. Never seen it like that in my life.
That's the most I've ever seen, as long as I can recall.
You managing to keep all the beaches open, Sandy, or?
We are. We're training two new guards right now. We're still down six or seven, but we've been able to keep everything open.
Good.
And we should, we should be okay. It'll, it will get a little difficult as we get into the second half of August, but I think we're okay until, until then.
Okay. Anything else for Sandy? Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
OEM.
Good afternoon. Don't really have much. So far, it's been a quiet summer, but we are starting to get to that point where we are going to be continuously monitoring hurricane season, so really starts to kick off August and September. So, so far, so good. It's been quiet. Other than Barry.
Than Barry, right.
Other than Barry, which, you know, we're not gonna see any effects from that at all, so. Just keeping an eye on things, trying to encourage people to stay prepared. So far, so good. It's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna start getting busy here, though, in August.
Yeah. But the overall forecast is relatively good, correct, for the hurricane season?
That's correct. Yes, they're calling for, I don't wanna say a quiet season, but below average, which so far, it's kinda keeping in, yeah. So that's what we're seeing so far. It actually seems like it's really quiet, so we'll see what happens. But it started off last summer was the same way, and then it got busy, so. Keep our fingers crossed and keep an eye on things.
Got it. Anything from anybody?
Okay.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Anything else for public safety from anybody? That's it? Recreation and tourism?
Hello? So, I have one special event application, sorry. It is from the Stone Harbor Garden Club. It's their, actually, no, it's biennial flower show. They do this every two years. And it's not, it's in September, the twenty-first, it's a Saturday. It's at the Stone Harbor Elementary School. The setup date would be Friday. So they're basically just asking for some no parking on Ninety-third Street and public works to deliver all the tables, chairs, and kinda set up the, the display set up for that event. Upcoming events, though, this Sunday is the Stone Harbor Triathlon, so expect some delays and some intermittent road closures. I am informing the public about that. I've already informed, sent an email to all the farmers market people, but we'll be doing Facebook and a e-blast and the website, just to let people know to expect some delays. We'll also have the electronic sign from the county on Stone Harbor Boulevard as well, just for that from seven to nine. So it's like three hundred and fifty runners and bikers and swimmers. I did also wanna mention the Tuesday night concerts have started. We started last week. We had over a thousand people. I think it went pretty, pretty well. We have another one tonight, every Tuesday now till the week before Labor Day. Arts and Crafts Festival, I've had some cancellations in the last week, so I'm just filling up those spaces with people on the waiting list. That's gone pretty well. And, and I did wanna talk about the event that we were talking about for the Festival of Lights. I got a little more information today. I did email this morning to the BRT committee. I don't know if you saw it, 'cause it's kinda last minute. We were originally talking about having an event at the Marina parking lot the night of the Festival of Lights, so somewhere for people to go to watch the boat parade. Apparently, they're already going there to watch it, and we'd like, we wanted to have maybe some food, some food trucks, some local vendors. We were offering it to the museum to get the one-day ABC Social Affairs permit, and I think that was offered to them a few months ago, but I think there was some misunderstanding on their end about what was actually involved in getting that permit. So this morning, I was told by the director of the museum, they're not interested, basically because of the liability on the insurance. So, we didn't really budget for the event. I haven't promoted it, so just wanna know, are we, do we wanna go forward with something without alcohol, or offer it to somebody else?
Recreation, tourism, thoughts?
I, well, I'm gonna run right to the end of it. I don't, I don't think that it was worked on the way that it should've been worked on, but that's not anybody's fault. But I also don't agree that we should be renting space the weekend of the Festival of Lights at the Marina to sell alcohol and/or food, because I don't think we should compete with what we already have in our town. That parking lot has been used for many years. If you've ever been down there for the Festival of Lights, it's full of people. They come with their cars. They sit there and they know how to enjoy themselves, whatever they're doing. I don't think there's been a police report of any problems down there, so maybe they just come and do exactly what needs to be done down there. I can't see us getting involved, if that's what you're asking, or you're asking. I can't see us getting involved in an event like that on that weekend when we are taxing every single piece of public safety departments. I just, you know, I remember many, 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 many years ago when it was stopped because it turned into a brawl at the yacht club, and I don't ever wanna see that happen again, anywhere.
I think the thought process behind it was, and people go there. I've gone there the last, say, two years. It's not, there's not a whole lot of people there, and we thought we'd see if it would be a way of drawing people who otherwise don't have a dock to go to, they don't really have a party to go to, where are they gonna watch it, rather than a street end. We would offer a food truck kinda festival.
I-
And court an awful little area, but all that, I mean, that was the game plan back in February when it was first mentioned, and that the museum would be able to run the beer and wine tent as a fundraiser to bring in some money. So at that time, my assumption at the time was the museum would be moving forward with it. I understand that now that they've decided they don't, so the question would be, do we wanna just scrap it, period?
If you're asking for a vote or a thought, I would say yes.
Asking for a thought.
And I haven't done any, I mean, we have-
Jenny's done, right, she hasn't-
We have the boat parade listed as an event for the yacht club.
Right.
But nothing that the borough is, is doing. And I just, I don't wanna waste any time, you know, on something that's, you know, people are going there anyway, and they're kinda doing their own thing.
I think it's a good idea, but I think probably more planning for next year.
And where it was budgeted, 'cause we really didn't have it in the budget, so we were kinda scrambling to figure out how to, how to pay-
I think it'd be really nice to have something on a small scale down there. I don't think it needs to be a blowout, but I think it would be really nice for exactly that, people who can go down there, enjoy it, and have, you know, some elbow room rather than being quarantined into a, street ends like they do in the other street ends, so. But I think time is not on our side now, and the concept was to help the museum, and if they're not interested, I would, I would say for this year, table it, but I, I'd surely love to see it happen, perhaps in 2020.
Anybody else? Just thoughts on pursuing it for next year?
I think that seems, seems reasonable. I think that's a good resolution. It's fine.
Okay, and it was not added to our calendar of events either?
No, it wasn't added, no.
No, so-
No, just the, the actual yacht club event is on there. You know, the boat, the times and everything for the boat parade itself, but nothing, you know, no official event anywhere by the borough.
So-
We do pursue it next year. Are we talking about the same format, that it would be the beer and wine and food trucks? Is that what we're considering?
Something to, to that effect, yeah.
Because I know that's exactly what it was that stopped the museum, because I was at a meeting last Thursday where we were still kind of, everything was nebulous. Kim hadn't had any direction in quite some time, and it's certainly not your fault, because nor did you. And she, she wasn't exactly sure what to present to the board. The trustees listened to it and said, "Well, let's wait and see what the borough says," but then when it came out that there is a liability issue, and the museum can't afford to take that kind of risk.
Yeah, that's what I understood this morning.
How isn't any different for the concert? Doesn't the-
There's beer and wine available there, and there's food, and there's people, and there's music, same concept.
An hour and a half, maybe two hours. This is gonna be six to ten during the boat parade, right next to water. It's a whole other atmosphere.
Yeah, the Chamber of Commerce, they have, they have a festival. I mean, they get the permit for all the concerts, but they also get that permit for their festivals. So I think they're just more on top of it, and they understand the insurance a little better. I think they're just, they've done it for, for a long time. I think with the, with the museum, there was, there were a lot of unknowns to them, so they didn't, really didn't wanna take that risk before they knew all the consequences of like what the liability is and everything.
And we continually, continually, continually discuss that that's the most underutilized area in the borough, and to try to, try to have, promote something that would bring people there, and you, Stone Harbor crowds do not tend to be drunken, out-of-hand get-togethers at all. It's families, it's somebody sipping a beer or wine, having something. You'd see a sunset, and you'd see the Festival of Lights, and probably a lot of people coming into town would either be coming from like the northern end of Avalon, or they, you could walk there. People from offshore that come in that don't have any dock to watch. It just would be a, a nice way to also bolster the event itself, because the event itself, I mean, let's face it, we're all watching it. It's not like it's crushing it. We're just kinda trying to help bolster the whole thing.
You have a beer and wine tent on Ninety-Sixth Street, do you not, on the wine festival?
Yes.
There's some, the boat, the boat.
It's no different.
Well, it's a lot, it's a lot different. It'll be dark down, it'll be dark down there. And, and to expect the police or someone to be down there and carting people for beer and wine on the, the night of the Festival of Lights seems-
Well, they don't use, that's usually not how it works. You, you get a wristband. There has to be some sort of a control in place that you send to the state before they give it to you. So the police aren't carting on Ninety-Sixth Street anywhere when we have beer and wine being served there. It's a wristband, and it's, you know, it's up to the person serving it, which would go to the liability of the museum, and perhaps one of the reasons why they did not wanna participate.
That's the responsibility, that the carting is, is on them.
On the applicant.
So, I mean, just so Jenny has some direction at this point.
So I'm not gonna waste any more time on it, basically.
So, good move.
Okay. That's what I have, so.
One question. How about the question on the Jersey Shore?
That application was incomplete. We also, there, I don't know if anybody knows this, but we did get a special event application from a company called Four-Ninety-Five Productions. They are the producers for a TV show on MTV called The Jersey Shore. I'm sure many of you know what that is. They are looking, they wanna film on a private property on August Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. They are trying to rent an Airbnb house for their staff or for their cast. They don't really need a permit to film on that property, but we don't, they also sent me the application. I said, I couldn't get it into the agenda for this meeting, so I said, "We, we couldn't approve anything in that timeline." So that's kinda where it is right now. If they want, they said they were going to contact like local night, you know, nightlife kinda places to get, they still have to get their permission. And I said, "They still need a permit from us if they wanna do anything on the street." They also didn't have an address for this house yet, so basically, it's an incomplete application, so I can't, we couldn't okay anything. So, right now, it's kind of a dead issue. I haven't heard back from them, but a year ago, I guess they applied to Wildwood, and they said no, 'cause they didn't feel it was, you know, the appropriate image for their town. So I, you know, I don't know. He kind of, kinda couched it as, oh, they're much older, and they're more responsible, and more affluent, but honestly, like, that's not what people wanna watch on television, so. I can't imagine, I can't imagine that they're gonna come in and, and be like, you know, really good citizens. But, but we'll, I mean, to be continued, basically.
Okay. Anything else for Jenny? Tourism?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So I know this is, so our leagues and camps started June twenty-fourth, so right now, we're in week three of them. It's really fun to actually watch the leagues being so competitive since the way that we go about picking the teams. There's actually an evaluation that happens the week before the tournaments start, and the coaches get together and they actually do like a draft. So the games have been within five to ten points. It's actually really fun to watch. I think it's really competitive, which makes the league very desirable. No one wants to lose a rec league game by twenty, so it's super competitive, and it's really awesome. The only problem with that is that some people don't make it until like week three, so some people are playing their first game now. So their games have been, you know, they've been playing three weeks with like four people or five people. I don't really, you know, I'm putting my heads together with the staff to try to see how we can kinda get better attendance early on, 'cause no one really comes down until the last half of the summer. So I don't know if we wanna do like different session one or like session two of the leagues, 'cause it's really not fair, 'cause, you know, now week three's here, now we have three-
Is that through all ages?
Yeah.
It's through all ages, okay.
I mean, most of the families are participating in it. They usually have kids that are participating in the juniors, intermediates, and senior leagues. But that's the only problem that we're running into. It's not really a problem, I know, but it doesn't help my staff when they're missing three of, you know, a first-round pick, and, you know, they have five kids playing with no subs, and now, come week three, now they have ten people showing up, 'cause usually, there's about twelve people on the roster. So now, you know, we're in a week three, now you have ten kids showing up, and then it's gonna reduce playing time for the five kids that were there for the first three weeks. So that's the only issue, but as far as that, everything's been going great with the clinics and leagues. So the, for the, the clinics, I actually created like a progressive sports-specific curriculum for the counselors, and they're really, really gravitating towards having some, like, more structure as far as the progression of per sport's what they're doing. So it's been, that's been great. They're learning more things, too, and not just sticking to what they're comfortable with. We had like an all-clinic day where they came, and if you don't know that much about pickleball, Kim Jackson was able to help us with a few pointers, 'cause we do run a le, a clinic for pickleball and stuff like that, so that they're not too familiar in, but they're able to teach it. It's been, it's been, it's been fun. Pickleball continues to grow and gain popularity. The numbers, we had thirty-two open play members last year, and this year, it's sixty-seven, and it's growing every day. People come and sign up for that. And the open play is pretty unique to Stone Harbor, because every morning, it's like an organized round-robin instructional play, and nobody else seems to have something that's in structure, where you come up in the morning and, you know, you can get in a game, and it's instructional over here, and so we have a really great, our, the pickleball program is, now that, now that I'm in, into it, and I'm seeing how it's compared to other towns, we definitely have one of the most. So that building is definitely being utilized, for sure.
That's good.
And they're loving that, too. The field hockey camp actually just got done, and that was a huge hit. They had forty participants, which was huge. They actually had to call in other people, you know, more of the staff to come in and help with that. The, just to give you a, kinda an average with numbers, our lacrosse camp is going on right now, and they only have, they have less than ten kids.
Wow.
So the field hockey was big, and they didn't have, there's no field hockey camp in Avalon, and I don't think there's any in CIO or anything south of us either, so. A lot of people really gravitate to that. And it was a lot of locals, too, because Dennis and middle township, there's nothing really as far as camp-wise for field hockey. So I think it's a-
It was a good addition.
Unexplored, unexplored sport that is really growing. Me being a lacrosse player, I'll, I'll allow it, I guess. And so the Monday Family Fun Nights also started on the twenty-fourth, and they've just been, the attendance has been growing every week, obviously with the people coming around, and I think that people actually look at the flyer and see, you know, 'cause we have like that Yoshi the Performer that comes, and they're kinda handpicking what kinda entertainment they wanna, wanna come to. Signs Tellers was always a big hit, and last night, we had- And last night, we had Yoshi come and then they did, we had a character artist, which everyone was like really stoked about. We had a huge line for that. And I compared some numbers of where we were last year and we're about $30,000 more in revenue than we were last year. And I think it's because we're really, the clinics that we have going on, we, they're, they're packed to the max as far as we can do counselor to camper ratio, the 10 to 1. And there's just been, obviously, a lot of people coming down and they just gravitate towards the rec.
So when you were hiring your staff for this summer, was there people you turned away? So if you needed to increase your staff or is it similar to Sandy's experience where there's some difficulty getting people?
No.
So if you needed to increase your staff, you, you get the applications and could get people?
We have volunteers that are, you know, 15, 16 years old that I think it's just the way of the program that they wait until, you know, a college kid doesn't return and then they go ahead and fill the shoes. So there's been, it's been a very healthy volunteer program and, I mean, I don't want to say they rely on them, but they are extremely, we have about four of them.
Okay.
That are, you know, 15, they're, they're able to work, but they just kind of want the flexibility of having a schedule. They're not down the whole summer, but they're, they're really contributing a lot, especially with running the leagues as far as working the clock, the shot clock and stuff and the books and everything to make it run a lot smoother. Only, yeah, only two people didn't return for the summer staff that we had to replace and that was very easy to replace that.
Good.
Those positions. And I guess, I guess I survived my first 4th of July.
Yeah, how did that go?
Chalked that up as a win. No, I think, I think it went great. We had an addition of the digital photo booth that everyone seemed to love. People were asking me where we got it from and it's a, it's a local company right in like Lynnwood area. So, but they, they were loving it and I posted all the pictures on Facebook and it was fun to see everyone like tagging their ants or whatever into there. So that was definitely a hit and will probably continue doing that.
Good.
That's it.
I have a, just a suggestion for you to consider on the 4th of July events. And maybe this year was exceptionally hot and humid. But I thought it might be beneficial maybe to close down the basketball courts for a period of time, maybe put some seating in there for people to be able to get out from underneath the sun.
Sure, under the pavilion. Yeah, absolutely.
Or even just some tinted shaded spots to get relief.
That's right.
You know, it is, it really is just blazing sun if there could be just something to get some relief.
Because the home run derby takes up that whole other side of the field.
Yeah.
I don't think there will be any room for tents, but I think underneath the pavilion area, I think actually, we could definitely do that.
Misters.
Misters. We'll work on that in the budget.
The boot camp has the misters there.
It's great, it's a great hit. Just making it more, just so it's...
A little more comfortable. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was...
You got a lot of people watching grandchildren and, you know, all those ages are represented and it does seem...
We do have a lot of races that make people out of breath.
Yes, yes.
I got a nice sunglasses tan that day.
You what?
I said, I got a nice sunglasses tan that day. I didn't realize I had them, I didn't even put sun tan lotion on. I took them off and I was like, oh my goodness. Um, that's it.
We didn't do them. Yeah, okay.
Anything else for recreation from anybody?
Nope.
Natural resources.
Couple of things before Lenore gives her a report. August the 1st, our council members will be meeting with representatives from Fish and Wildlife. The questions that I had received from the public have been forwarded. They did indicate that they will answer those questions. They're still deciding whether they'll send it directly to the individuals via the email or whether they'll send them to me and I would disanimate them. They haven't finalized that decision yet, but, so I just want to give you as an update on, on that was two outstanding things from the last meeting. Then, Lenore?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
Things are running smoothly and I thought I would take the opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on the Diamondback Terrapin nesting season that's just now coming to a close. I get a lot of questions from folks about how it's going and I also get a lot of interesting comments about people that either feel like there were a lot of turtles this year or there weren't a lot of turtles this year. And it varies every year and I never kind of understand why that, why people feel one way or another. So the terrapin seizing is winding down right now. There's still a few females out there, but for the most part, they're finished nesting. And I want to thank the borough for your efforts at helping make people aware of terrapins on the roadways. That's the biggest challenge we have is, as for that species, is people to know they're out there. So the Public Works guys have been great about getting some signage up at the 80th Street Marina, the, the boat ramp, they come up the boat ramp. It's hard for them to find a way to get out of the water, so they, here's this beautiful boat ramp. They ramp right up there and then where do they go? Right into the, the training yard, their maintenance yard and lay eggs back there. But it's also a challenge for people not seeing them when they're pulling boats in and out. So they do have some signage there and also you guys have some of the terrapin magnets on vehicles, just making people aware of things. So we do appreciate that. A couple of statistics for you, unfortunately, this was a record breaking year, which we, in this case, don't like. We do, you're all familiar with the road patrols that the Wetlands Institute conducts twice a day. It's a 38 mile route that goes down Stone Harbor Boulevard, up along the bayside, up island, then it goes out Avalon Boulevard and then it goes, normally it would go over a bridge, but it goes back in and comes in Sea Isle and goes up Sea Isle Boulevard. So it's basically really their, their female terrapins coming out of the nest, they're coming out of the water only to, to lay eggs. So they're digging nests, they need to get up to high ground. And that space is just being reduced more and more. So all the statistics I'm going to give you are from specifically that route. If it wasn't seen or counted on that route, it's not part of these statistics, even though we have great ethic with folks bringing us turtles and, and helping us and saving turtles. Those aren't part of that count. We have no idea how many that is, but it's certainly a lot. On average, we've done this now for 30 years, on average, we see about 500 dead terrapins a year on that route. This year, we exceeded 750.
Wow.
They're all, as I mentioned, they're all adult females, they're all coming in to, to nest. It takes eight years for them to reach sexual maturity, so these are old turtles on top of all. So when you're trying to work on conservation, this cumulative loss of slow maturing individuals is pretty significant. It's a cumulative impact that makes it very difficult. It also makes it very difficult to see results of conservation methods because you have to get those juveniles up to reproductive age. So it, it makes it difficult for any of these species. We call it life in the slow lane. On the positive side, our patrols also saved nearly 750 terrapins on the roadways in another record breaking year. We also, as you all know, we retrieve from those, from those mothers if they have eggs and the trauma isn't too severe, those, those carcasses are brought back to the institute and they're operated on, the eggs are removed. This year, we retrieved nearly 900 eggs. On a typical year, we're in the 700s. So the incubators are packed over there, there are eggs everywhere. Those terrapins, the hatchling terrapins, if you haven't seen them, it's pretty darn remarkable. They started hatching on Saturday and they should be hatching for about another month. So this is kind of, it's a great circle of life and for the undergraduate interns that are there working really hard, our volunteers, even all the staff in the intake of terrapins at the institute, it's pretty hard to be there for that month and a half of seeing all that. So this is kind of really nice for them to, to see the other side of that. It would be terrible if they left by now and only saw the one side of it. But we do continue, continue to be concerned by the number of deaths that we're seeing on roadways. That's a lot of terrapins out there. The hatchling terrapins are raised by us and Stockton and we have an extensive permitted program with trained staff where we can actually train teachers in a program that's called Terrapins in the Classrooms. And it's a state managed program, but we can put some of these hatchling terrapins in the classrooms and the teachers raise them for a year. There's a curriculum that goes with that and this is all funded by the Disney Wildlife Conservation Fund the last several years. Those hatchlings, so they basically don't hibernate, they stay active and well fed and they grow. A normal hatchling terrapin will hide in the mud and they'll be about the same size next year. These guys grow to be about the size of a three-year-old terrapin, so they're much, kind of much bigger. And the idea of this head starting is that they're more able to survive predation and just do better when they get back into the wild. Those terrapins are brought back to us in April and they're released into the marsh. The Stone Harbor Elementary is one of the participating schools in that program and they get to, not only do they name them all and everything else, but they also release those terrapins back in the marsh. Our job is to get those terrapins back into the marsh. And we're able to release about 150, 170 terrapins back into the marsh the following year. Another piece of this is to try to understand what happens to them. We microchip these hatchlings at the one year mark when they come back, same as a vet would microchip a pet, the same technology is used for that. And we have, we have more than 5,000 terrapins out there with microchips. So a big chunk of the population that are out there. We, we may know them. Our focus for these long-lived species, as I mentioned, is to save the adults. That's the biggest thing. We do all the work with the, with the juveniles, but the survival of that juvenile to get to the eight-year mark is, is, is pretty low overall. So the biggest component of that is the terrapin barrier fencing. I get a lot of questions about the barrier fencing that's out there. That's our first major line of defense and that barrier fencing that you see, the tubing on the roadways, it's about 80, 90% effective when it's continuous runs and where it's well maintained. The, they basically can't climb it. And people always ask me, why can't you put it further back into the marsh? Well, the answer is we're trying to give them a place to nest. So they'll come up onto the roadway seeking that higher ground and if they find a place to nest, they can nest without trying to cross. But we cannot place it where we have breaks, driveways and any of that. We also can't place it on one side of the roadway if we can't place it on the other side because then we end up trapping them on the roadway. So people ask me a lot, why isn't there more, why can't you put more fencing out? And effectively on Stone Harbor Boulevard, we have about all the fencing we can put out. You start driving it now and realizing where it is and it isn't. But our biggest issue isn't necessarily the cost of the, of the fencing, it's the maintenance of that issue. We can't let grass grow up along it because they're super great at climbing. So if the grass gets tall, they climb right over it. Mowing gets to be a problem because they end up damaging it. Any place that, any of the stakes are removed, they're just, it's, it's a woman on a mission and they just try and try and try to get through. So, so that's a big challenge for us is to have that, is to have the fencing, but it does work where we can have continuous runs. The other piece is signage to try to make motorists aware of the terrapins. We're trying to get more signs out, but the kind of static signs, I think people kind of just, kind of ignore them. They tune into them if they're not changing. So last year, we put a sign out on the institute property where we actually change it and based on the activity level. Because there are times and days where there's just turtles everywhere on the roadway and trying to let people know now, now pay attention, you know, so we do a high, medium, low on that, change it hourly. And we have seen a, a drop in, in, in deaths right in that vicinity of that. So that does seem to be working a little bit. I talked about the microchip program, which is, which is really neat. Basically, every terrapin we interact with on the institute property or on those road patrols or that are brought in by the public are checked, checked for microchips. So we can track an individual. We know a little bit about an individual and it turns out, we know a lot of them. We have a lot of return of, of animals. On Friday, we had a really cool story come in. Concerned citizen brought in a terrapin that she thought was injured, that she picked up on one of the roads in Stone Harbor and brought her in. And as it turns out, she was an orphan terrapin that was headstarted in 2000 and this is the first time we knew she was back. So she's been somewhere for 19 years and it was really...
And she was microchipped.
And she was microchipped.
So they've been being microchipped for how many, that's a lot of years.
25 years.
Yeah, it's a long time.
It's the most comprehensive program in the country.
Yeah, that's a long time.
It was just one of those kind of, it was cool, you know, when you get that back to, to see, to see them. And another cool thing we're doing right now, that we're getting some really neat data, is we're working with a company called Celia Tracking Technologies. They're a Cape May-based company and they work largely with satellite tracking devices and GPS tracking devices. They mostly work with, with all kinds of wildlife, but mostly birds and dry kinds of things. So we said, so, how do we, can we track something?
What kind of things?
Things that are dry, not in the marsh. So we try to see if we can track, so when we release that little hatchling terrapin, we have no idea where it goes. We don't know what its habitat needs, we don't know where it lives, we don't know what it needs to survive. We just, nobody does. It's not like, so we thought, well, can we find a way to do this with radio transmitters? And whenever you put a device on an animal, there are rules, it can't be more than 5% of its body weight. So you take something that's that big and you have to put something even smaller. So the technology has to be pretty darn remarkable to have battery life and, oh, can it, can you get a signal from something buried in the mud? So we didn't know the answer to any of those questions, but we released 25 of the juvenile terrapins last year and we actually tracked all of them. And it's kind of fun and it was like, well, what did they do? Well, some of them just buried right there and didn't move, some just took off, you know, here's your personality traits of terrapins, right? Some of them just went, walked right out of the, and then we haven't seen them again. And then we have for, on some of the adults, we have GPS trackers that are on them and we're getting signals for some of these females that are, they're going plus five, six miles out into Jenkins Sound, but then they're hanging out in kind of the same place. So they've got their, their zones. And just last week, one of, one of the interns that, we patrol the whole property, the whole 30 acres, looking for them and one of the interns came back with one of the GPS terrapins. So she was here last year, came back and we find as they do, in fact, return pretty much to where they nested.
Yeah, I was going to say, they come back?
It seems like where we have repetitive, they come back to nest, where we catch the same ones over and over again, it's only about a 50-foot radius, so kind of the space of this little area is where they're nesting again. So, so this one came, obviously, we caught her on the, on the, on the institute property, fitted her with a tag and said bye. We named her Phoenix because we never saw her again and then she popped up and came right back and we got all her radio signals. So catching her was, was pretty cool. So there's some really neat work happening over there on the research side of it and any kind of data we get and we learn about, we incorporate into the conservation methods. Again, we receive a lot of questions from people about ways to help. I know people feel pretty helpless about it sometimes and the simplest thing is, don't run over terrapins. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but be aware, slow down. There's a, you know, it's, we were talking the end of May to, to pretty much now, there are terrapins out there in, in a lot of places and we live in a special place and just kind of finding a way to share this, our space with them is, is pretty cool. And again, if you count a terrapin on the roadway, everyone asks me what to do, if it's safe to do so, underlined, 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 take her in the direction she's going. And that's kind of what we can do. Being aware, I think, is the biggest thing. So it's a neat program, I just wanted to give you an update. The numbers are pretty staggering. I think in some ways, we, we remove those, we remove all the dead terrapins from the roadway. So I think that's part of the reason people don't see them out there, but I don't, the alternative wouldn't be very good either, so. So that's really all my report. I said, I just thought it'd be interesting to give you guys a little bit of an update on what, what that project's about.
That's great.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Is there a particular time of day when the terrapins come out?
No. We, we have, we have all the variables you could think of and it looks like a shotgun blast. There does seem to be, if it's been cool for a few days and then the sun pops up, they seem to start moving. Some of them are lazy and they let high tide bring them closer. Um, some of them are lazy and they let high tide bring them closer, so sometimes we see a pulse with high tide, but there are other variables. You can have a great high tide, but it's cloudy out, they won't come out. Um, and then there's also a timing, they, they sometimes can nest more than once, so if we get a big pulse, thirty-nine days later, we expect another one, but for the most part, it's pretty, pretty variable. They nest at night, they nest in the rain, they, so, not able to actually tell you that other than when we know they're moving, they're moving and it's kind of for the whole day, they can go crazy.
Going in and out, uh, from Stone Harbor to Courthouse, I've, I've looked for them and I have not seen a single turtle crossing the road this year.
Well-
I haven't either.
Not a one.
I didn't either.
Just haven't crossed at the right time.
Oh, I've seen them.
I, I've had six and seven terrapin mornings coming in some days, for sure. Um, Avalon, well, come over to the institute, I'll be happy to show you some terrapins. We have a few.
I believe you, I believe you.
And it is really cool, I, if someone does want to come and see them, them hatching, a few of you have seen it, it's, it's remarkable.
It is awesome to see if you have, especially grandchildren or younger children to see.
It is, it's remarkable. You want to help them out, because they're exhausted when they come out and they're just, they're, they're cute, for sure. Um, yeah, we're happy to show you and it's kind of fun, because you can, you know, when it, well, of course, they have the, they, they bet on what day the first ones are going to come out, but you hear this spontaneous singing of Happy Birthday down there. They figured out that Happy Birthday is actually when you're born, not the anniversary of your birth. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, natural resources?
Well, there's the correspondence that we received, um, about the, that, is that going to be on this agenda? Yes?
It is.
Yeah, the, um, Chelsea Park trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's up next.
I get, everybody got copies, correct?
Yeah, we, we have copies of it, yeah.
Okay.
We've talked about this a couple of times, um, for quite a while and I think the last time it was talked about in natural resources, it, the shade tree, um, also chatted about it and, um, I think that my, I thought what was being done was that we are being good neighbors and keeping our trees so that it does not go over the yard or the fence that the gentleman is complaining about and, um, we've kept them trimmed and I, you know, I don't have an answer, except that we did not, uh, agree that we should be taking the trees down the last time we discussed it.
And there's some big trees to take down.
Yes, yes.
It looks like, I looked at them yesterday and they, they're trimmed back. They appear to be like maybe about a two feet back from-
Yeah, as I said, we talked about with Shade Tree, Natural Resources, and I don't know if it was in Public Works or another committee, um, but the last time we talked about this was a while ago and, um, we just felt that, you know, I think it's easy to say that everybody could look if they have a pool in their backyard. We all have this in our pool in the backyard, somehow, some way. Um, and, um, I just, I think they're, all, all the neighbors that are there are blessed to have that park there. Um, if that was not done, I don't know what it would be right now.
Did anybody else go take a look after getting this?
This is, I've seen it.
Okay.
I, I've been there, you know, in, just at the park.
Right.
So, I think I can picture what it looks like and I think it seems to be pretty, you know, pretty-
Because I was, when I didn't see anything hanging over a fence.
I think that Public Works has, yeah. Public Works has done their job, which is what we, I think the last time we had this request, um, we said that we'd be good neighbors and we would keep them trimmed and I think we've done that job. That's my two cents, but trust me, it's on the agenda.
Anybody else have?
You know, I, I would like to help these people out, but, by the same token, we live in a very windy place and you, you can't, and, and if, if we, if we said, okay, let's take these trees down to help these people out, I think the following week you'll get more requests from other people on the island. This tree bothers me, that tree bothers me, this tree's in my line of sight and I don't know if we want to open that, that can. I mean, I think, I think if we're doing due diligence and keeping them back as, as far as practicable, we can't control what the wind blows around the island.
Well, can the, can the citizens have the tree taken down themselves and pay for it?
Not on, well-
It's on our property.
Yeah, it's on our property. These are, how, how high would you say they are? They're big trees, a hundred feet?
How high?
Very-
They seem higher than that to me and they're, yeah, they're big trees, they've been there a long time.
Yes, they have. Back in the eighties, that was done.
They look neat.
With a grant, not that grant, a grant.
Oh, okay. And what does, what's Shade Tree's role in something like this? Shade Tree Committee, what's their role in this?
Um, they, they do review any requests on trees, which they did meet and the recommendation was not to remove them.
Okay.